Welcome, everybody. Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and welcome to our November 2, 2017 Public Work Session of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll go on to the public hearing part of our meeting. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea. I'm really just going to turn this over to Mr. Bartels to take a few minutes and describe very briefly what a district-wide safety plan is all about, and then we can open it for discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. The district-wide school safety plan is something that is a requirement of New York State, the Education Department. We're required to update it every year. It's basically a comprehensive planning tool to address risk reduction, prevention, and responses to various emergencies that may happen within the district. There is a district-wide safety team, as well as building-level safety teams. So we have a district-wide plan. We also have building-level plans, which actually really get into the details and the specifics of what we do in the different drills and emergencies. Those building-level plans are classified. They are not able to be distributed to the public. They need to be kept within the buildings.
Robert, the goal of those plans specific?
The goal of those plans is to detail exactly what's going to happen in each emergency. It's how it has alternative locations, like other sites, that building may have to go to when they need to leave the building. They'll have the detailed procedures for a fire drill of where they're going to exit, how they're going to exit the building, different locations where they would meet up with, and something like that. The details of a lockdown or a lockout, if there are specific code words that may be used. So there's a number of different things that are more specific detail for the building-level plans.
The detail is to keep our children safe in case of a large-scale emergency, and the need to keep that private is just to keep them safe.
Correct.
Keep them safe from the next move the district will take to keep a building secure.
Exactly.
Thank you.
The district-wide plan is obviously much more general and really ensures that there are procedures in place at the building level to address those various issues. The hearing we have now is just for it to be presented publicly and to allow time for public comment each year before the board would adopt it. The overall safety plan does actually require coordination between central administrative areas and each of the school buildings to make sure that the programs -- we have programs in place to address different things, like school security, cameras, building access, door locks, emergency drills, like lockdown, lockout, or fire drills, violence prevention and responses to violence, and also mental health. So I think this plan was available outside. That's really just a broad overview of what the plan is about. So I don't know if the board has any questions.
I have a question. I didn't see it, but is there anywhere in the public plan, and I thought page 14 is where it would appear, that goes to notifying the President of the Board of Education that there is a disaster or an emergency in the district? And if not, I think it should be added.
No, I don't see it, but we certainly should have that in there. We can look at it a little closer, but we'll make sure that's in there.
Similarly, under intrusions and kidnapping, if you're listing the order of which things happen, I think informing the school superintendent, being notified, should be closer to the top of things that happens, instead of calling the police or parents before central admins notified.
Top of page 15.
Oh, sorry.
That's page 16.
15 and 16.
15 and 16, yeah.
And then also on page 10, I had a question. Under implementation of school security, the first bullet is that visitors will be questioned prior to entry into the building as to their business and if they have an appointment. That's not consistently being done across the district. So I'm just curious as to what -- how our building principals are kind of trained to follow this. Some buildings, they just buzz you in. Some buildings, you do have to state who you are before you come in. So just maybe for consistency, we can get that across the board in the buildings.
So the questioning doesn't happen at all? Like, I'm thinking of Hewitt, maybe the questioning happens once they're in the building?
Well, Hewitt specifically is an issue because you're buzzed in immediately, and then you walk past a classroom of children to get to the front desk.
Right.
So there's a real gap there. You're being entered in automatically. You buzz, you're in.
Is that monitor have a -- does that monitor have a security camera that they can view?
Yes.
So she's looking, when the door is buzzed, she or he is looking at the person at the door?
You see who they're letting in.
Yes, but they're not asking.
But they're not asking what you're doing there. You could be anybody, and you're still getting buzzed in.
But I'm not defending that action. Maybe that they see Tara Hackett out there, or Mrs. Hackett.
No.
Okay. And you think anybody could walk in?
I mean, I don't know if they let me in because they know me, but if it was my mother, I don't know if they would let her in, you know?
I've never heard the intercomm use, to be honest with you.
Yeah, but I'm hurt because...
Okay. So it's worth it. Worth to reach out to all the buildings and see if they do. I know...
I know they've asked me who I am and why I was there. So I have been asked, but I don't think it -- I think it's obvious. It's something we should...
But I think the question is, did they ask you that before you went into the building? Or did they ask you that once you were in the building? I think that's...
They, yeah. They'll usually get you once you're in.
They asked me before I went into the building, but, you know...
Yeah, I've never heard that intercomm used, ever, to be honest.
My experience at Hewitt has been walking the back door, because it's unlocked, and walk right into the monitor, the whole monitor there.
It's normally unlocked.
I don't know what time of -- you know, I go, there's typically a monitor there, but that back door is, I can't recall ever ringing a buzzer. I may be wrong, but I know in the past quite a few times that it is open.
Yeah, I've seen that a lot.
Maybe I come early where the teachers are still coming in.
From the parking lot?
From the parking lot, yeah.
In that door that's adjacent to the principal's office?
Yes. I've never come in the front door at Hewitt.
But you're going in the same time the teachers are going in?
I think it's open and accessible up until around 10 minutes to 9:00, and then it's locked.
And I...
Because I know that when I go to Hewitt, after 9:00 in the morning, I need my key in order to get in the building.
Okay.
So, and if I don't have it, then I have to ring the bell.
Okay, that's fine. So, you know, we'll reach out to all the schools, make sure they're following some kind of protocol?
Right. But in every school, we have, we've added video cameras and monitors so people can see who they're buzzing in.
Definitely.
Yes.
That was something, another last bomb that we...
Well, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, because when I go to a bill, I don't know that they know my face, I ring the bell, and they buzz me in without saying anything, but I, you know, they see who I am, I'm assuming, you know? So, okay, so that's something we'll just -- what you brought up prior with the bomb threat, are we going to move the superintendent up to kind of the top of the list there?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
In the chain of command on page 17, are all these employees full-time at that building?
Yes.
And now, does this stay on our website?
Yes, yes.
Forever?
Yeah, no, it's on. Well...
Until next year.
Until next year, when we revise it again.
All right.
So we just -- anybody else have any questions? So this is something we let the public review for 30 days, and then we will approve it in approximately 30 days. How about meeting pause? Okay. So to everybody in the public, you can take it off the table outside and review.
Or any time within the 30 days, they can get in touch with my office or anybody else, or at the next board meeting, they can certainly bring it up again.
Do we -- we don't discuss this anymore typically?
No, not formally. It's not necessarily formally as part of the agenda.
Yeah, no, I'll put it out to the public now, but I'm just saying, the next, until 30 days comes up, any board meeting that comes up, we don't have to open it up and talk about it anymore. We can if there's a comment, but we don't...
No, no, no. We're not, we're required to do a, provide for a hearing, which is formally what we do now. But it's on the, it's already on the website.
Okay.
This is not a community that does not have access to this information, so it's not something that we would not discuss at any time. We could. But formally what we have to do, and then there's a 30-day hiatus between now and when it's supposed to be approved.
So at the visitor portion of our next meeting, we'll open up the, you know, people can come to us and have a comment or question or concern about it. Okay. Very good. And we have no need to approve or anything at this point?
All right.
Now, part of the hearing is that we open the floor, but I don't know if PTA is going to join us, but I do know that there is a meeting going on in this building right now.
So can we open that up at a later time?
If they come in?
If they come in, sure.
I mean, you may want to open it up to them.
Anybody here have any comments or questions about the safety plan that they'd like to? Okay. So if we get, if we get more visitors, we'll open it up for that, for that reason also. All right. We're now entering our public work session, which will be discussing the zoning policy and the food service program policy. At the, once we finish the policies, we will open the floor up to any comments from anybody in the audience to, you know, to share with us their thoughts and concerns about that. All right, we're on 7160, the policy. We have rewritten from the last, we have edited from our last meeting. Any questions or concerns from the board?
No.
One, the paragraph on the first page, starting with "Students assigned to a new elementary school."
Okay.
About halfway through the paragraph. "Parents and guardians may choose to return their children to their originally home, originally-zoned elementary school. However, that transfer will only occur at the start of the school year." Okay. Now, looking at this from, from me, from my understanding of how it is, can be implemented on, from the parent perspective, is in June, they have not decided, they're zoned for a school, a home-zone school, but they send their child to another elementary school. And they've been there for the year. Now they are questioning as to whether to have their child remain at that other school or come back to their home-zone school. They haven't decided until the first day of school. They can do that, according to this. In the meantime, though, other parents and children may have been assigned to, you know, it's, the assumption is that that child will remain at that other school because that's where they finish the year. And having no information to the contrary, that's where they would remain. If they were to come back to their home-zone school, other children may have transferred in, or maybe just through regular, normal course of enrollment, and you now have classes that if this child was to come back at such a late date, or even if it's at the end of August, could push that total up and over what we would consider some sort of a decision limit, making limit. So again, I question as to, in this particular instance, does a child who is in a second school, going back to their home-zone school, that that decision should be made sometime during the summer if they were to do that? You know, could put July 1st in there, or July 15th, or something like that, where there is enough time to do some intelligent, logical planning?
It does make sense.
It makes sense, or?
Well, it's a little bit long.
I know it's long, because I couldn't...
It makes sense. We got it.
He just kind of said we need a date.
So why didn't you take just a period?
Yes, that makes sense.
The critical date, Mark, and we've been, is when the Board of Education does its tour.
No, it's not the critical date.
I think this should be an earlier date.
Yes, agreed.
Well, because you're, what Mark is trying to get to is that you're looking at the whole district, and you're allowing other students possibly to move. So this student needs to make a decision one way or another.
Well, then you should probably, and make it by June 30th of the...
June 30th, July 1st, one of the...
Right.
Close of the school year.
By June 30th of the year in which they, yes, and not during the, for the following year.
Thank you for being so succinct. Why didn't you say that the first time?
I got there. But I don't know if that would go in the regulation or the policy.
Well, it's listed here, so it has to be...
Okay.
I think it should be a little more...
We'll take a look at it, but it actually, what he's referring to is language in the policy right now.
Right.
But it sounds like a regulation.
Yes.
In other words, the specificity of it makes it sound like a regulation, but the issue really comes up as a result. So yes, we can deal with that in the regulations.
Anything else? All right, moving on to 7160R.
So when will you submit the regulation?
I'm looking. I'm just trying to do a quick read. Yeah, I'm not doing it yet. Let's see.
It almost seems like it would be something separate, like a separate, in the regulation, it really isn't.
It's really not in the regulation.
It's really something separate.
Letter D.
It's in the policy, but it's not in the regulation.
Yes.
All right, well, just...
We'll add something.
If we don't put it in the policy, then we have to find a separate, we'll...
You could just put it in the policy. Request must be made by June 30th.
And you don't have to make another paragraph.
Yeah. Right? Parents may just return to their home, originally schooled, but the fact, request must be made by June 30th.
Of the school year just ended?
Yeah, something like that.
Doesn't fit in it.
Because otherwise, you kind of have to create a whole new...
Oh, a whole new address, yeah.
There's nothing in the regulation that addresses that. Yeah, you could. Why don't we give a...
Change the policy, yeah.
See what, any which we set it up as...
Yeah.
Decision to apply, and what do you say?
Yeah.
You got the old, sent out.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm going to go get a new one, because I got scribbled all over mine. I don't have any.
This was in a packet.
I kind of memorized it, but...
We did?
I did. She did.
I didn't. No, I didn't. This one hasn't been added, because that's what we asked for at the last meeting, so
this is the newest change.
That's what I have.
Mark, got the ones from the last, before the last meeting?
I have the, this one, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
I have the correction.
Yeah, the one with the corrections.
You didn't?
Yeah, exactly. And that's the stuff I came up with the last meeting. That's what we changed.
That's all the changes. That's what I have to...
What's this?
Does have so many, so many different...
I know, we've got a lot of versions.
Different versions, so I just wanted to make sure.
Is that all?
Right, yeah, these are taken.
What did I say?
Okay, I'm fine. I have everything.
Any other questions on the regulation?
Give us a moment.
Okay, no problem. Take your time.
Yes, I noticed.
7160, the 7160 notice, a few changes.
We're in a street.
It'll actually come to us now.
Yes. That was funny how many people didn't see that.
It went over, how many times?
All right, at this point, I think I'll open the mic up to the public with anybody, anybody has any issues with any of the 7160s, the regulation, the policy, or the notice. Please give us your name and address.
Hi, Katie Conlin, 63 Broadway. My question is with how this is going to be communicated to, like last meeting, this was going to be placed in packets for new registrants coming into the district, whether, like, there's no going to be, there's no letter that's going out to people like that has been in the past. So this was going to be in the packets. Is that the case still? Like, so if I move in to Rockville Center in January?
We are going to be careful about identifying those people who are new residents, or if residents of the community, new to the school system. That's the group of residents that we're focusing on.
Because my question or concern here is that there is a lack of trust, to put another way, from the community to the Board of Ed with regards to how these new entrants to the district are given their choices of where to go. And I will just say that I don't think it's, that someone moving in mid-year, that's one thing, because a class is not going to get a split. But if it's someone that's coming in, a new registrant coming in for, you know, to start school in September, I feel like this should not necessarily be offered to them. Because I know from experience, when my son's kindergarten class lost those seven or eight kids, they didn't get the split that they would have otherwise gotten, we waited two years for finally to get enough kids to come. And had this policy and the way things were been in place, I don't know if I would have trusted that those kids who moved in and finally came to Hewitt, and we finally got the split that was needed. There's that lack of trust there, that are you going to offer this behind the back, you know, of the people who are in that school waiting for these kids to come? Do you understand what I'm saying? Am I making myself clear? I mean, I spoke to, I just feel that there's a lack of trust, and I feel like there's an attempt to heal that, that issue there, but when you've got schools that are waiting for kids to come, and you feel like they're being siphoned off behind your back without even knowing about them, that's where the problem lies. If it's in a school where there is no space to split, you know, that's another story, but I just still feel like when it's for the start of the school year, this policy shouldn't be in those packets for people to consider, because that could be the one, two, or three kids that are needed to split that grade. And if there's a classroom available, that grade should be split. See what I'm saying? I feel like that's still a very murky gray area in this policy.
But, look, we have to understand that, in a very real sense, just, let's just, what you did was just substitute your judgment for that of the Board of Education. Because what you said was that you felt that that should be, they should be splitting it, not considering doing something different.
If there's a classroom available, because if you think back to the two schools that you had problems with, it was Riverside and Hewitt, both schools had empty classrooms.
Yes.
And there were kids, and no matter how you want to say it, that were, it was the parents' choices, but they were offered a policy, and those kids were taken from those schools that otherwise could have very easily been split. And they were left in class sizes that were much larger than their counterparts in the other schools. So, and we waited two long years, and we're talking about the earliest elementary school years. This is happening in kindergarten, first grade. It's unlikely to happen in the later grades. And that's where, you know, these class sizes, that you get those two or three kids that can, and there's a classroom available, they should split, that those kids should not be offered to go anywhere else. And that's where you're going to have a problem with the public. I mean, it's not my problem anymore. My kids are in school. They're here, but that's, you're going to continue to have people coming out to fight you for these early elementary school years when there's a lack of trust, you know, and it wasn't, there was no mal-intent, but it's what happened to Hewitt, it's what happened to Riverside, and there's a lot of missed, you know, there's a lack of trust that exists. And I feel like the way this policy is, it's very gray, and it's impacting such early elementary school years, and it's, yes, like, making us trust you that you're going to make what's in the best interest of the kids and not necessarily what's in your bottom line's best interest. And that's been my problem all along with this policy, because it happened in two schools where there was a classroom that was available.
Well, what we did was to put into the policy this time the different variables that would be considered when a decision had to be made. And there are five of them, that, five bullets. The needs of the children, the educational and social and emotional needs of the children, but you have them right there.
No, I know, but you're not then taking into account the social and emotional and other needs of the kids who are being left behind in those overcrowded classes. You know, I think back to, you know, my son in those kindergarten, first grade years, and had this policy been in place, which it was suspended, so those kids, they didn't get offered anything, and they came, and we got the split, which was needed, and I'm so grateful for that. But had this policy been in place, that may never have happened, and they would have continued to be in that. And that's where the trust, or the lack thereof, lies in the community, because it's, it's, there's always going to be that suspicion that you're siphoning kids off. And I know you've got a factor in your bottom line, but it's happening at such a critical juncture in these kids' educational careers. You know, these are your youngest, youngest kids, and they're the ones we should be protecting the most. And I feel like this policy, the way it is, it still has your budget first, and that shouldn't be, you know, I'm not saying you can't ignore it, I'm a taxpayer too, I know, but it's something that I feel until that is, there's more transparency, because I don't feel right now that that exists. And I think you're going to continue to have pushback from the community on that.
Katie, what do you think is missing from the policy for the, what would you need it to be more transparent?
Well, I don't think, it's one thing if the child is already in the district. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, because they're already in the district. I don't think that this policy should be applied to new entrants. I think it should be something that, if new entrants come, you go to your home-zone school. If there's a population issue at that school with no available classroom, then you can offer the policy. offer the policy. But if there's an available classroom in a building, this policy should never come into play, and that, those people should be going to their home zone school. I'm talking about new people.
You're just talking about new entrants.
Yeah, like, I feel like if you're, if I move from Hewitt to Watson, and I wanna stay at Hewitt, and assuming there's no major population issues there, if there's a population issue there, I don't think I necessarily should be allowed to stay. I think if I'm in a class of, you know, you know, like, I know at the current sixth grade, well, they were the fifth graders last year at Watson. They had some population issues, but there were at least four kids there that were allowed to stay at Watson that didn't belong there. They were youngest children, you know, allowed to stay, but there were some issues at Watson that had, you know, they had some large class sizes. I think that new, people who are existing in the district, they're already accounted for, you know, so if I wanna stay at my school as long as it's not overcap, you know, and it's not causing problems, you should let them stay. My issue's with the new entrance, when you're waiting for people to move in, and you're waiting for them to finally, like, get enough kids. I just remember waiting for those two years for enough kids to come in so that we could split. I feel like the new entrance should go to the home zone.
Let me, let me just take your thought and put it in writing, and talk about a real situation that exists. And you were at the meetings where it came up. Wilson School. We, as you know, had to put art outside. What that meant was that we really didn't have enough rooms in the building, regular classrooms to accommodate. So what you're suggesting is that for, that we should've invited, or, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but that the circumstances you're describing, we should've gone to the Wilson community and said, "You can this year send your children to Hewitt."
That's what you did to us four years ago.
That is correct. And under the circumstances, people moved.
And the only difference there was that we had a classroom, and Wilson doesn't. We weren't faced with the conflict of having to lose art. Wilson, yes, you should've, you could've approached them with it. I mean, you did it to us with a classroom that was left empty, and I think that was the sinful part of it. Wilson's a different scenario, you can't compare the two, that, yes, if you have a population issue, this policy should've been offered up, 'cause there was no available classroom, you're taking art and music away, or art from the entire school. I won't speak for the Wilson community, but you did it to us four years ago without, you know, batting an eye, in a sense, you took those kids away, and they left. And then we finally had enough kids. So had this policy been in place, you could've continued to siphon those kids off as they moved in to the Hewitt zone.
I'm not sure how many moved.
Well, we got enough to finally split, that's my point.
Were they new residents when they came to second grade? I don't remember. I thought they were people who moved within the district.
I really would need to go back and look at the charts.
Yeah, I believe that they were people who were moving within the district, they were not new residents.
Okay. However, I just feel like this policy, the way it stands right now, I just know from what happened in waiting for those kids to finally move in, this policy doesn't do anything with the changes that have been made, there's still gonna be that lack of trust that exists, that you're not going to do what's in the best interest of the kids, 'cause that hasn't necessarily happened in the years past.
One thing I would say is, we don't wanna look at this policy as the class balancing policy, that's why it's not seventy-one fifty-nine. So, right now, what it's come down to is a bullet of criteria under zoning exemption. So what I would just point out for new entrants is that I understand your concern about, you know, would, which, first of all, I mean, I think we've put checks and balances in for, to replace that trust, that we're trying to redo the way we're doing this. So I would ask the community to give us a chance at this. But going back to your point, for new entrance, you're assuming that the only reason they would ask for this is because of class size, and that's what's different about it. We have new entrants that have other criteria that they're interested in, and that's what we're trying to appeal to, not just focus on that class size. So, you know, we mentioned the last meeting, but if somebody came into the district new, and they have no idea how many kids are in each class, but they just wanna go to a school for another reason that falls in this criteria, then it's our job, all of us, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Leahy, and the board to oversee it, to determine if that could be approved. Their reasons might be nothing to do with numbers, but then where the numbers play into it is, do we have room for that child to make that move that they're requesting? So that's the biggest difference that I see between class balancing seventy-one fifty-nine and seventy-one sixty. These are people that are applying for zoning exemptions for a multitude of reasons. One may be class size, that they perceive they're hearing that Wilson's so overcrowded, so they wanna take their chances and go to Riverside. That's a possibility for sure. But that's not the only reason, and I think that that's what we're trying to focus on, giving opportunities to parents for a multitude of reasons to apply, and apply is the key, apply for a zoning exemption, which is not then automatic, but needs to go through a process. So I would just wanna have, you know, just open your mind to, that it's not the only reason we would, you know, grant something like that.
But I'm just saying, there's a lack of, I understand, and I know that, and I appreciate, and I know there's an attempt to be more transparent, and you're trying to get transparent, and you're trying to get the public's input. But I just feel like if this, again, it doesn't apply to me anymore, my kids' class sizes are, you know, they are what they are, they're gonna be out of elementary school before I know it. But it's, it's something that I think, given historically what's happened year after year, I don't think these changes that are gonna be made, I think you're gonna still have problems, because there's still that, that lack of trust, because it's just not transparent. And I know you can't make it too specific and too, you need to make it general, so that it can be applied, 'cause there's so many.
Yeah, but I think what Sue was saying, how do you make it transparent?
Well, that's where I feel like, the kids who are already enrolled, I feel like the new entrants are the ones where you're looking for kids. I don't know, I just feel like it's making it, if you, 'cause, to take the words from one of the other parents that spoke at the previous meetings, you know, this is a policy that benefits the few that take the opportunity to do this, and it leaves the, all the ones left behind at a disadvantage. That if I'm the parent of the child in that class of, you know, twenty-five kids, waiting for one or two more kids to come in so we can finally get a split, but yet that parent who moves in sees, I don't want my kid going, for whatever reason, and they go somewhere else, I'm still, we don't have that split. So it, you know, it benefits the few that take it to the disadvantage of the ones who are left behind. And that, that's sort of where my, I don't know how to fix it, but I feel like the new entrance are something that I don't think it should, I think that's one way to kind of make it possibly more, not having it be applied to them, because they're the ones you're waiting for. The ones who are already zoned in another elementary school, you're not counting them. I just, I don't know what the answer is, but it's, I don't think this is gonna.
We keep doing this in public, because we're hoping to get answers.
Well, I'm trying to give you stuff, I'm telling you, don't allow it to go to the entrance.
You gotta understand, I mean, you keep bringing up problems with it, and we're trying to resolve them.
Right, I'm saying, don't allow new entrants to have this policy be applied.
But then we're denying them the opportunities that exist, that come outside of numbers, by taking them out.
You know, the bottom line, like, you move by a house, you buy a house where it is, and you have to go to that school. I mean, enough with this, like, trying to please everyone, you gotta.
No, but.
That's the way it used to be.
Yes and no?
When I grew up, I mean, I grew up in this town, you moved, you went to the school that you moved to.
Oh, okay. Well, I was, since I've been in this school district, this policy has been in place.
Zoning, not, not.
Since nineteen seventy-nine.
Zoning policy.
What the zoning policy was.
So, there have been, and I, since I've been superintendent, we routinely have anywhere from three or four to a dozen requests every year to retain kids in schools. So it's not unusual for that to happen, it's not, well, it was not well-known, we didn't make a big deal of it, but it's been there, and it has happened, over and over and over again. So this is kind of an expansion of this to new entrance, and as Tara was saying, what we're trying to do is to get a little bit away from the notion of just class size being the only issue that we keep looking at.
But that's what the issues of the parents who are in those classes are looking at.
Well, yes and no. You have to understand, when you get inside, and we, it's difficult for us to discuss this, but all I can tell you is that when people want to either remain in a school where their children are attending, even though the family had to move, or want to change, they very often have some really good reasons. Sometimes there are real conflicts between themselves and others maybe in that school. There may be an element, a real health issue that we have to deal with. Or, as more frequently we hear about, all kinds of childcare issues. About, you know, my cousin lives on this street, and I have to drop my son off there, why can't the two of them go to the same school together? And quite frankly, those were the issues that bubbled up in the whole discussion when we had Riverside. And the people who were involved, even though we couldn't put them on the carpet, never intended their kids, to send their kids to Riverside to begin with. And as a matter of fact, two of them moved out of the district. And that was something that they didn't share with us, but obviously was going on at the time, that all of this was boiling at board meetings. You're right, all of that created trust issues. And it's, two things are happening here. One is that we're trying to reasonably deal with the very real and real-time, real-life problems that people bring to us, and yet at the same time, not be disruptive to instruction in the, in our school district. You know, I don't wanna get involved in a class size issue discussion, but the, the issue has to go beyond that. And I think the idea that this board is trying to be both transparent and flexible at the same time is very admirable, but we, if there are real issues that you have, we really need to know, not just the problem, but how you might help us figure out a way to resolve it.
I think I did, and you didn't wanna hear it, though, when I said this policy shouldn't be applied to new entrance, because, you know what, you can't.
But who does it get applied to, then?
You can't separate the two. Hold on, you can't separate class size from this policy. They go hand in hand, for as much as you wanna get away from the numbers, you can't. But if you are in a class, if you're a parent of a child in a class, and you're waiting for those extra kids to come, and yet this policy is being handed to them in their packet before you even know that they're there, and then they're registered for another school, and you, you know, lost another kid yet again, I just keep putting myself back, four years ago, you took eight kids from Hewitt, and then we finally got enough two years later to split, and that split was life-changing for my child. And I can't help but think that if this policy was in place, that never would've happened. And that's where I say the new, and I don't know who it was that moved in, or if it was kids that moved from town, I don't know, but.
But, but we need to understand.
But either way, I think it's a compromise to say that this policy won't get offered to new entrants.
But understand, somebody pulled out of a hat this magic number of twenty-five. And there is nothing in the world that says that twenty-five should, is the operant number. I can tell you for a fact that we used to have classes of twenty-eight, we had twenty-six more recently, and the class you're talking about at Watson had a class of twenty-six and another class of twenty-seven. So, and, and I know those kids are doing fine in the middle school, they're no longer at Watson. So it's not that we can't educate kids in situations where we have more than twenty-five, but I don't know, see, I, somewhere along the lines, we're gonna have to get away from this concept of this just twenty-five as being the number that everyone focuses on, and you run around the neighborhood trying to enlist people to move in in order to make sure, oh my God, we've got twenty-four. If you move and buy that house, it'll be twenty-five.
Well, I think that's being extreme, thinking that that's what's happening, but in the same sense, in a district such as ours.
Yeah.
Allowing for kindergarten and first grade to have classes of twenty-six and twenty-seven when there's an empty classroom is sinful. It's different story if you don't have a classroom, you put an addition on to Watson, knowing that they have population issues. So clearly, having kids of twenty-six, twenty-seven was not acceptable, because you were willing to put money from the bond to Watson to expand it, so that they didn't have to deal with that. So we need to do better, that in kindergarten and first grade, we should not allow that to go on. So I don't even wanna hear, that's a whole.
Just so we, look, that's a whole other discussion.
And the community, we, this was spoken to, spoken about at the community level, and the community was, wanted the twenty-five, or that's what they agreed to. If we were to change, we need to bring the community back in and change that twenty-five number, it's just not something, you know, that's, that's what, that's how we built, we built the district, that twenty-five.
Right, and I think that's, you have to draw the line somewhere, but to say that, like, twenty-five and twenty-six and twenty-seven is okay, I think right there that that's, we need to do better than that, especially with, when we're talking about kindergarten and first grade. I mean, I think that's, when you have an empty classroom, that, you know, sat empty for two years, it's, that's, that's an aside, and I don't wanna take any more time from, the other discussion here, but I feel, it's a compromise to not have this policy be offered to new entrants. I just feel like, for the kids who are waiting in those classes to get one or two extra kids to move into the district, if it allows them to get a split that they've been waiting for, so be it. The kids who are already in the district, they're accounted for wherever they are. But I feel it's a fair compromise to make this, and if a kid moves in mid-year, you know, if they move in in January, you can offer to them, 'cause that class isn't gonna get the split anyway. It's just those kids over the summer, the new entrants, that are coming in that are gonna start school in September. I think it's a fair compromise, 'cause those families that are waiting there for those kids to move in to get the split, I think those kids waiting are entitled to that opportunity, that the kids moved into their zone and let them go. But if it's a mid-year move, or a kid that's in the district, then this policy can go to them. I don't think that's an unfair compromise.
I think we all agree that we would like to see our kindergarten and first grade, you know, down in the nineteen and twenty range, and we've made an effort to make sure that that happens. So I don't know how to create a, a policy on zoning that guarantees that. So.
Well, I think also that we were all elected as board members to hear the community and make decisions based on what we're hearing from the community, and I think that the trust is a big word that you say, and I think there has to be trust that we're gonna make the right decisions. We don't wanna see overcrowded classes either, so.
Thank you, Katie. Would anybody else like to come up and speak to the policy, the regulation, or the side letter, or notice? No? We will, everybody on the board, okay, moving to stage three, next meeting. So that'll get, that'll be in a public meeting on, excuse me, today.
November fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Mm-hmm.
November fifteenth, it'll be here in this room, and it'll be discussed again. We will, you know, we'll talk about your point that brought up, and we'll, we'll see where it goes, if it goes next week, all right? Thank you. All right, we're moving on to, I need my glasses, policy fifty-six sixty, school food service, school food, school food service program. Any questions from the board? No questions? Five-six sixty R, the regulation. Any questions? Move to stage three, next meeting. We did, we did speak about the school, the district-wide safety, school safety program. If anybody has come in that would like to address any concerns or questions about that, they're welcome to come to the mic at this point. Please, please give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kara St. John. I'm a mom of two children at Hewitt Elementary School, my daughter Charlotte's in first grade, and my son Ryan's in kindergarten. Sorry, I'm not really prepared, I was just gonna observe and listen and take it from here, but now I might as well just dive into it. Being a parent of three kids, and I'm sure you can all agree, my number one concern is that they're safe in the school atmosphere, and I personally, and my husband, and speaking with some other parents in the community, I feel that there's inadequate safety protocol and security at Hewitt Elementary School, as well as other Rockville Center schools. I'm not sure, besides the cameras and the, you know, the new. I'm not sure, besides the cameras and the, you know, the new door they put up at Hewitt, what else is in place, so maybe you could just give me some of your feedback and tell that I missed.
I mean, I don't know, you know, the doors are locked after the staff arrives, anybody, typically, visitors would have to be buzzed in, go to a, you know, at least, you know, I don't know, a hall monitor type of setting, sign in, and then be sent to, sent to the classroom, or the, or the person that they're there to say. So beyond that, I don't believe there are any other restrictions, or?
My, you know, like I said, my number one concern is life, in life, is that my kids are okay, and they're safe in their environment. Just being a parent at Hewitt, I've had a couple instances that other people would hold the door for me, and just allow me in, just by discrimination, just allowing me, which was very kind of them, but it's an unfortunate situation. My main concern is that someone, anyone, would be allowed into that building at any point in time.
Cara, before you got here, I just actually asked Mr. Bartels in the school safety plan if there was consistency in the schools, because I, they're supposed to ask who you are before they're buzzed in, so we did talk about that specifically at Hewitt, so that maybe we could relook at that process, that people are not just buzzed in and then asked why they're there, but that there's measures taken before they even let people in the building. They always do view us, but they should be communicating with us verbally.
Right.
So, just wanted to fill you in, because I know you weren't here for that part, but I did raise that, because I know we have to walk past a classroom of first graders to get to the main desk.
Right.
Which is kind of unusual at our school as well. We have the littlest kids on that floor, I know that I've heard that from parents as an issue, and my, my son's in first grade too, so I have concerns about it myself, so I think we're going to go take a look at how we can maybe rectify some of that entrance into the building at that school specifically, just wanted to fill you in.
Okay, I know some other schools in the local area have, like, anti-rooms, I know Hewitt doesn't have one, but I know that would be helpful, or a security guard, I'm not sure if there's talk about that, or any possibility that any of those things could be looked at, but I'm just, I'm just talking to other parents to have, who also share the same concerns as myself and my husband and other community members.
I'm familiar with what you're talking about with anti-rooms, but that's, that would have to be a budget, we'd have to get those, that would require a state-approved plan, and that's something we would have to discuss during the budget, and would require state approval and construction. At Hewitt, I'm not sure we would even be able to do that. I'm not sure which entrance you come in, but-
Right, the main doors, yeah.
Front or back?
The front. The children enter through the main doors in the morning.
Okay.
Only small buses come through the back, in Project Great, but the general public goes in through the front.
And I know the doors remain locked for the majority of the day, but my concern, as well as some other community members, is that getting into the building, if someone were to ever get into the building, or even on the playground, when the kids are on the playground, there's no security whatsoever, there's just aides with walkie-talkies.
You don't consider that, when you, when you say "security" on the playground, what would you, what would you think would be?
Cameras that have a view of the playground?
We have that.
And the surrounding areas, they do have that?
We have that, yes.
We have cameras that go as far as the perimeter of the properties. So, for example, for Hewitt, we have them that go to the gate, Bradford Gate, and then as far back as the field, as well.
We have cameras, there are, we have a couple that are, you know, movable, we can kind of aim them where we need to, but we have others that are fixed for a good portion of the exterior of the property.
How many cameras are at Hewitt, inside and out?
Full block, 50 to 60.
Who's watching those cameras?
There were aides in the buildings that have the ability to see the cameras, the administrators have-
And the principal's office.
The principal's office, and over in central office, Director of Facilities and myself also monitor the cameras, and I watch them, obviously constantly, but we have people that can see them at any time.
Right, at all of our buildings, the people who sit at the front desks-
Yes.
-can have, like, a view of 16 cameras at once, that rotates around?
Yes.
In every single building.
And the administrators usually have the two, they have two computers, yeah.
The principal's office has a screen that, you know, flows through all the cameras also.
Yeah, it covers the majority, and not every piece of property is covered, but the majority is the main areas, the playground, the asphalt area, a good part of the field, all covered.
Okay. And are the, if you don't mind me asking, are the aides trained on the security procedures, I would have to assume, like, for lockdowns and-
They're required to.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They're required to have a certain number of drills, so they have to do the drills throughout the, this certain number by the end of December, a certain number by the end of the school year, so they do practice throughout the year, lockdowns via drills.
Okay.
Dr. Johnson mentioned before he came that there's, this is open, well, discussion is always open to public, but this particular conversation will continue for 30 days, so we have another meeting coming up, and if you have other, you mentioned other people, if they wanted to come and talk about this, they're welcome to come, of course, at any time, but then, you know, this is the time period that we're working on this-
Right.
-and looking to make any additions, so I would just encourage you, or anybody else who's interested, to come to the next meeting again.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Board actions? Can I get a motion to approve items A through D?
So moved.
And the addendum 1 and 2 to the P A R. And the addendum.
So moved.
And I, and I, I can never get that right, that's a piece. Does your motion still stand there?
Yes, so moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Ball in favor?
Aye.
I'll open the floor to a board member, if they would care to make any comments? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel contractual and litigation matters? Second? Any questions, we're there. Thank you for coming, everybody.